Okay, I'd like to, uh, the Kirk County Board of Commissioners is convening this special public meeting April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five at five-thirty-three P M in the Broton Room of the Kirk County Library. I'd like you to please stand for your pledge of allegiance, and I'd like my cowboy hat guy to lead us into the pledge of allegiance. Come on then, come on.
My memory is gone, so please, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, Karen, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, okay, all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, my God, in the goodness of the Lord, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good job.
My hat's been too tight.
Okay, moving right along, the county is pleased to welcome with us today to one guest from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, Laura Frederickson, who was gonna be with us tonight, she had a medical emergency, so she is not here. So we only have Greg, I shouldn't say Greg, we are very privileged to have Greg Swalen, our D E Q Regional Solutions Central liaison. The topic of today's meeting is to get an update on the domestic well sampling plan efforts of the groundwater around northwest Elliot Lane and northwest Stehansik Lane. Tonight's meeting will begin with a presentation by our D E Q guest, followed by an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions directly related to the information provided by him. When the time for questions come, please raise your hand, and John is going to come to you with the microphone. Begin your question by stating your name and address, some of you, I think, were gonna know who you are, and limit your question to three minutes, and, and thank you, let's all, all try to get all our questions in. Okay, Greg, I'm gonna take it away.
Hi, everyone, um, my name is Greg Swalen, I work for Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. I, my typical job is coordinating economic community development projects through the governor's office, and I've been involved in this project, uh, this issue for better part of two years now. And I wanted to start by reading something, and it's gonna be short, uh, and it's gonna be short because our agency got hacked, and I had to write this on my phone, so I kept it short. But I, I wanted to get a couple things said, and I, once I start talking about the various plans, I wanted to make sure that some things were said right at the front, and then we can get into the three main topics that I wanna talk about. Can I stand?
Yes.
So. Well, I'll start by reading this, um, and then I'm gonna talk through three different main topics. If you have questions after each one, that's fine, it might be better to hold the questions until the end, because some of these topics interact a little bit and overlap, and it's possible that you could get some clarity on your questions, but, um, happy to read this, and then, um, I'll start right in. So groundwater quality and the contamination in Kirk County has been a primary focus and a concern for D E Q going back almost two years. And there's hydrogeologists, permit riders, and really the leadership in both the groundwater and the water quality programs within D E Q paying really close attention and coordinating on this issue. That coordination has also included residents, Kirk County staff and elected officials, the Oregon Health Authority, DoGAMI, the governor's office, and the federal delegations of both Senator Wyden and Burbling. And there are many people at all levels in trying to figure out this issue that really care about what is happening here, and the first time that I came out here two years ago, sat in a room with some of you here, um, I, I really saw and felt what you were going through, and I just want you, I wanna acknowledge that, that in all of these meetings, and there are so many meetings around this issue, what you're, what you're going through, it causes a lot of stress in a lot of ways that aren't even directly related to water, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, that, that is front and center for us, and you have the state's, the state's attention when it comes to that. With all of these people involved, it is an ongoing challenge to keep every one of those agencies and people up to date, especially when conditions are changing quickly as this issue has, even though it doesn't always feel that way. And for that reason and others, I'm, I'm appreciating, uh, the invitation to be here and really to talk about things, um, and that everybody can hear what, what I am saying, what the agency's doing, what the state is doing on behalf of this issue at the same time. I'm also here to speak directly to D E Q's role in this issue, which is really centered around three different but interrelated efforts. And those three things are, one, a comprehensive sampling and analysis plan, which I'll talk about first, and then a past and present domestic well sampling efforts, and then finally, the groundwater investigation that the state compelled, uh, with Night River in October. So I'm gonna talk about each of those three things. And there are obviously other areas of interest related to the issue and to the site, and that includes land use, the operating permit, and other things that D E Q is not directly related, uh, involved with or that are, uh, the purview of other state agencies, including DoGAMI. D E Q's chief responsibility really around this issue is a, a single water quality permit called a W P C F permit, stands for Water Pollution Control Facility, it's called a one thousand permit, it's a general permit. What a general permit means is simply that anybody who qualifies for different uses can get a general permit, it is not site-specific to any source, it just covers a broad territory of things. And if you, if you, if you meet the criteria, then you get the permit, that's what we have, um, at least as it pertains to the, uh, the mining site and the mining footprint. Um, D Q's generally not responsible, uh, or has any regulatory authority other than that permit with regarding to the mine site. Uh, that does fall to DoGAMI, and I, I say that just to set realistic expectations of what's gonna be talked about, but I will answer, you know, any questions that relate to either state coordination or involvement around this issue, uh, and how we're kind of looking at things, so, I wanted to read that at the front. So. I wanna start off and talk about the comprehensive sampling and analysis plan first. Like I said, um, two years ago, I came to a meeting to hear about this issue really for the first time, and I know that there was some local, um, some local happenings around this, uh, issue even before I got involved, but really it was the first time that myself or the agency understood that there was a problem with groundwater contamination in Kirk County, and really from the very beginning, uh, D E Q's perspective on this has been that we don't know what's causing this problem. And really, when we came out and said that, it was the governor's office and the federal delegation, local officials here who were saying, okay, we understand that, what do you need to be able to identify a source if there is one? And we thought about that and pretty quickly started working on what we call the Comprehensive Sampling Analysis Plan, or SAP for short. And this plan is basically what the state thinks that we need in order to answer the question of source, or if there is a source. And that plan, um, is finalized, we worked with EPA on that, we worked with DoGAMI on that, Department of Water Resources, Oregon Health Authority, uh, Jim Newton, the local hydrogeologist, was involved in that as well. All of these mines in water came together, and we finalized the Comprehensive Sampling Analysis Plan. That's the good news, it is done. The bad news is that we have not been able, despite trying numerous ways to get that funded, it is about one point four million dollars, one point five million dollars. Um, this plan is more comprehensive than the mining footprint, it expands beyond that. And basically, the point of all of this and the cost of one point five million dollars is to try and figure out where this is coming from, and if there is a source, that is the point of that comprehensive plan.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So I know from people, local people and people across the state, that D E Q finds all kinds of different contractors and rock pits in different places, and I know we've talked in the past, and that money does not go into, can you, can you talk a little bit about, because I think everybody out here knows that D E Q works very hard at finding people and brings in a lot of money to the state, where does that, where do those dollars go?
Yeah, it's a good question, Commissioner, so the penalties that we assess go into our general fund. There's a, there's a basically a statute that says that it, it is not a good look for a state agency to find companies and also use that money for their own operations, so that money gets swept right to the general fund, uh, we don't have access to it. I'm, I am happy to get you, uh, information, like, over the last five to ten years, roughly, how much money?
How, how much have you brought in? And the reason I ask that is because I think that might be something we can take to our state officials, like our state representative, state senator, and the governor, and say, this is what the general fund is making on this. I guarantee it's more than one point four million dollars a year, let alone over five years. Probably worth taking some of those dollars and putting it towards a project that would actually help people not just stop construction projects, I'm happy to get that for you, yeah.
And the general fund being not D E Q?
You need to say your name, sorry Julie.
Sorry, Julie Thompson, um, so the general fund is not D E Q's general fund, it's the state's general fund.
No, we, we don't use that money whatsoever, it gets swept right to the state's general fund.
Okay.
At which they're using on lots of different projects.
Right.
But again, if they're spending time finding these construction companies and different people throughout the state, and then not using that to help people when they have water issues, that's pretty egregious in my opinion.
Yeah, so, um, the state agencies and DoGAMI went to the state legislature to ask for this money, uh, we were not successful there, and then we also worked at the backing of the federal delegation from both senators' offices who are, have been very involved in this issue as well. Uh, we're supportive of, of, of a federal ask for those funds for one point four million dollars, we did not get that either. Uh, we resubmitted for that about two months ago, um. The problem with this is that it would be another year before we found out whether we were successful getting that money, and then it's about six to nine months to disperse those federal funds, so we're really looking at eighteen months. Um, it's not a realistic timeframe, but as I'll get to in a minute, the state has other ways for kind of answering some of those questions around source, but I bring it up because I, I want you to know just what, kind of what the state's been doing and thinking around this and trying to get answered when we were asked, what do you need? Uh, we, we spent several months with technical people documenting exactly what we need in terms of the monitoring network to get that question answered. So right now, that is the status of the Comprehensive, uh, Sampling Analysis Plan, it is completed, it is ready to go, waiting for funding. Are there questions about that plan so far? You can always ask after as well, but yes, please.
So, well, just a question is, is it possible to stop doing work until we actually get that plan done? Because I guess from my perspective, I mean, pollution is continuing and ongoing and present, and it's at least eighteen months before you can even get an answer to the question unless you're using a secondary source other than the, um, than the analysis reports.
Um, do you mean stopping at the, at the Woodward mine site?
Yeah.
So they stopped using the, the wash lagoons, um, I'll get to that part, it's kind of a little bit further on. They have, they have temporarily since March eleventh not been using the wash bid at, at Woodward site. And there's, yeah, there's no mining currently happening, um.
But they could go back at any time.
Right, and I'll, I'll get to that, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. So that's, that's really the status of that plan, um, I guess the point is, um, we were asked to, to work with other agencies, including federal ones, to put down what we would need to do, we did that, it is not cheap, but, um, that is what our best effort is, is the information and data we would need to be able to do that work, and so that plan is finished and waiting for funding.
Um, before we move on to that, once we get those dollars from Greg, I would implore you, you folks in the crowd, I'm happy to share that with everybody, and go to your representatives and write letters to them and say, there's this much money going into the state fund, state general fund, funded by fines, levied by D E Q, let's use some of those dollars, again, to help people not impede production, construction projects.
Yes.
Is there any guarantee that we'll ever get funded?
Uh, I don't think so. No, but, but there are other ways, um. The, the, the sampling plan was kind of the first effort when, kind of in the earlier stages of this, when we were laying out how we wanted this to work and how we were gonna get this data, we, we have other ways now, which I'll get to, that may kind of make that unnecessary actually, because of other actions the state's taken, so I, I really don't think there's a lot of hope of getting that plan funded, um, unless, you know, at least through the means that we've tried so far, but I, let me talk about the other kind of things that we have going on that maybe can answer those same questions in a different way, um, and we'll, we'll see what the questions are at that point. So. The second, the second piece I wanna talk about is the domestic well sampling. So when we did not get the funding for the comprehensive sampling plan, uh, D E Q went to the legislature to ask for domestic well sampling, and we were successful in that, um, twice, and so the initial sampling effort of sixty-one wells started last fall. And many of you may have been involved in that, we went out to your house, Maul Foster did our state contractor. So that effort took place in fall, and the next, the next round of that, kind of the second phase of that is going to be starting next week, and so many of you, uh, should have received an email notification, and also will be getting a phone call from the consultants. I wanna talk a little bit about kind of that data and what it means, um. Initially, the concern that we were hearing really over and over again, aside from where this is coming from and, you know, who's to blame, was really about the health, and it, and it resonated with a lot of the state agencies in the sense that we were hearing health concerns, like what, i- if you are drinking the water, what is this doing to us? We heard questions about, you know, I, I, our family drank this for X amount of years, we recently stopped, we don't know what the ramifications that are. So while we were still working on the, the larger plan, what we could do in the near term was fund domestic well sampling and immediately get that information, uh, back to residents and to the Oregon Health Authority. The Oregon Health Authority is gonna be doing what's called a letter of health consultation, which looks generally at all of the collective data from the sixty-one homes, and looks at the risk, um, of, of drinking the water, basically, with, with various, uh, populations, and so they'll be, they'll be doing that as soon as the second round of data is collected, so that will start next week, it takes about ten days, uh, goes through quality assurance, quality control, we get the data back, the data will go to you, and it'll also go to the Oregon Health Authority. So the health piece is one part of this, but there's a really important second reason for wanting to do this testing and re, and doing it in the times that we are, and the reason is because the, the letter that went out to everybody pretty explicitly said this is not about looking at a source. And so we wanted to caution that there was never an expectation when D E Q did this, that this would lead to a direct line to anyone's source, because the data and that means of collecting is really not able to do that. What we need to do is have more information before we can better contextualize the well data that we're getting in, and what I mean by that is get information from what's happening on the mining footprint, and then start to look and see how the domestic well data that we're getting from many of your homes, both in fall and then in the alternative season in spring, and see kind of what this picture looks like. And so it's not a real clear answer of whether this is related to source detection or not, and what I would say is, right now, fundamentally, at first, the idea is to get information to you and to Oregon Health Authority, the health piece is the most important, but secondarily, and especially moving forward, there's going to be a time when the data that we collected out of the domestic wells is going to need to buffer and support the, the arguments that the state is making. And so there is value in collecting this data at two times a year and doing it twice, and the idea is that once we get information from what's happening on the mining site itself, we now have more data to look at, contextualize, and make sure that that also fits what we think is happening on that site. Yes?
Sorry, I have another question, so I, I'm maybe a little bit confused because you said that they, you didn't get funding, but we are doing another round of testing, so I guess, can you clarify what that additional funding is for then?
Yeah, so, so the, the funding that we did not get was for one point four million dollars, that was for the comprehensive plan, kind of a basin-wide look at what is happening with groundwater, it's a very larger scope, but that is kind of, that is what we need to answer the question. The domestic well sampling was an ask directly from D E Q to the legislature, and they funded the initial round in fall, and then reimbursed the agency for that, and then funded the second round, which is gonna be starting next week. So it's kind of two different asks, there's a, there's a lot going on with asking different people for money and trying to get plans scheduled and everything. Um, the point is, in terms of the domestic well testing with the sixty-one homes, that was funded specially by the legislature for this purpose.
And does that include the testing on the, on the mine site also?
No.
So that has not been funded?
I'm gonna get to that.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it right.
Confusion out there, what, what you're saying is that, that the original testing and the new testing aren't specifically set up to make a decision among who's?
No, I get that.
Does everybody understand that?
Yes, yes.
We remember, and also we as commissioners wrote letters asking for this, this wasn't the big chunk of money, and we asked and lobbied and helped D E Q, this was a non-big a chunk of money and a legislature released so that we could get these two rounds done, but the one point four is still out there, but
And that's to do with?
we at least got this kind of done, which was really, we were very grateful, at least we were able to get this done.
Right, I just was unclear on the one point four million was basically to do countywide testing versus just our area at like?
Countywide?
It, it, it wasn't countywide, it wasn't limited at all to domestic wells, and really domestic wells was only a small piece of that. Really what's in the larger comprehensive sampling plan, and I, I hesitate to talk about different plans in different sections, because it gets confusing. But the larger plan, the comprehensive plan, was really monitoring wells appropriately stationed around Night River and other places to get a better understanding of the flow and transport across kind of a wider area to show us what's really going on in, in terms of the cause of the problem. This domestic well sampling was limited to a legislative request for a hundred thousand dollars twice, uh, which is just the sixty-one homes, there's twenty-six or so different parameters, um, that we're looking at. But, you know, again, I think the, the important piece here is that while it's, it is, it is about health results going to, it will change yourself. This is important for contextualizing the data that I'm gonna talk about in just a minute, that we all want. So, so there is progress even in an indirect way on trying to figure out the source of the problem. That's, that is a function of the domestic data, although we don't really say that, because predominantly and right now, it's about health.
Which is really very important, because we wanna make sure to not get sick or anything.
Okay, so the third piece, um, is yet another sampling plan. Uh, this is the Night River groundwater investigation, and it, it took, it took a bit of time, but, uh, D E Q kind of got up to speed on some of this data that was already available. We heard a lot from residents, we heard a lot from elected officials, and we went out for a site visit, and I don't remember exactly what that was, it was, it was last summer. Um, and when we came back, there was seven or eight people from, from D E Q on this, along with other agencies, but we got back after that meeting and really looked at where we were at with the comprehensive plan, and that was not looking good, and really looking at our authority under that permit, there is language in there that basically says if the state agencies see suspicion of groundwater contamination, that they can require, uh, what's called a groundwater investigation from a specific source. And in October of twenty-twenty-four, about six months ago, DoGAMI and D E Q wrote a letter to Night River saying, we have a suspicion of groundwater contamination on your property, and we are going to compel a groundwater investigation. The point of that investigation is to determine whether Night River frankly is contributing or causing the groundwater contamination that we're seeing. And so the question now is, what's happened since October? And a, and a lot of work has happened, when you put together a groundwater investigation to try to identify really specific and nuanced questions in the aquifer, there is a lot of technical people that get together and really answer the question, how do we arrive at the answers that we need to do? And so that is what we have been doing for the last six months and are at the very end of right now. So there's a lot of back and forth with a lot of different agencies. The initial request after the letter came basically said you have six weeks, we asked the company first, give us a draft of what you think we could do monitoring-wise on your footprint to answer the questions that we have and concerns we have about your operations. So they provided a draft to us, which is a sampling plan, we looked at that, EPA looked at that, all of the agencies that I previously mentioned looked at that. And from the last three months have been back and forth from technical people answering questions about the well locations, how many wells there's going to be for monitoring, uh, whether that's in the upper or lower aquifer, how far we can get off the footprint, um, parameters that we're gonna need, all of those types of, type of questions have been finer tuned, and now we have, are very close to having a work plan which incorporates basically all of the monitoring that the state is requiring that company to do to answer a question of whether they're responsible for this examination. So until the cyber attack happened, we got our last, um, are basically our final comments back from Night River. There was fifty comments to address technical comments, they addressed all of those, um, in the next couple of weeks, that work plan is going to be finalized, and then testing and monitoring will occur on a monthly and quarterly basis per that plan, um, by Night River and others. So I guess the important piece here is that we, since October, since we sent the letter compelling the investigation, now have six, six months later, basically a final plan that EPA's looked at, uh, all of the state agencies, Jim Newton's looked at that. Um, and really the state and everybody involved is com, is comfortable in saying that now that we have this plan, we're very close to finalizing it, once we do that, we should be able to answer the question of whether that specific source, uh, is responsible, and that is the point of that investigation. So. Here we are, um, and we're, we're, we're very close to having that, uh, be implemented. So after it's completed, which should be a matter of weeks, um, the monitoring wells will begin being installed almost immediately after that. So I guess, you know, we're, we're pretty close to being close to getting answers, uh, back with data that we think is gonna tell us whether that specific source is responsible. And that's where, uh, one minute, and that's where then looking at, you know, as we start to get that and we get domestic data, then we start to get another picture. Fine.
Uh, you said that they, Night River and others would be testing themselves, basically, um?
So. It's, it, it's not a surprise in this room, there's going to be likely trust issues with Night River collecting data.
Yes.
Okay, but we, we've established that. So, um, the state took a, a somewhat unusual step in that there's, um, there's gonna be secondary samples collected on this site, and that basically means that either Jim or D E Q's lab or EPA is gonna go out and collect some amount of samples at the same time and place, and that's basically industry practice for building trust in the verification process, that is the point of that. Um, when Night River does collect samples, those samples go to an EPA accredited lab, they always have, this will be no different. So you're talking about a company collecting the sample and then setting it to an accredited lab with dual samples taken by either the state, the federal government EPA, or by Jim Newton, any of the, all three of those. Um, and so that was done specifically because of the trust issues with Night River that we recognize in the community, whether they're valid or not, it's not really, it doesn't really matter. Uh, we really want there to be trust in that data, and so that's why we took that step.
I, I just wanna say for those people that are online, uh, if you want to give a question you'd like to present to, uh, to Greg, uh, send a chat to him, who's running the computer, and we'll get to your question, so.
Then we have two questions out in the audience, this lady and then the James.
Yes.
Who was first?
Sir. Um, Brian Zetnick, I'm, uh, about a thousand feet due north of the plant, um, I've heard there's, uh, holding ponds there. Yes, my question is, we talked about testing groundwater and, and developing that map and that pattern in there, but, you know, the aquifers are fifty feet and a hundred, hundred and eighty feet deep, a lot can happen in a, amount of time. Night River is not using the plant right now. Doesn't, does the potential concentration of the arsenic and the, um, uh, manganese and that, does it happen above ground and then filter down into the aquifer? And if it does, why don't we test the ponds? Uh, manganese and that, does it happen above ground and then filter down into the aquifer? And if it does, why don't we test the ponds? In the area around the Fox soil test?
Yeah, so there is some amount of soil testing in the Knife River groundwater investigation that will occur too and, and including directly from the wash pits.
Okay.
The wash pits. Um, there's not a lot of soil samples, but there, there are some in specific areas that is included, in, included in the plan that will occur. So. Um, when I talk about, you know, mostly the water monitors, there also is soil samples in the groundwater investigation.
Okay.
The work plan includes that, yes.
On, on my field there, I've, um, I run a ground penetrating radar down through and to select areas in there, a couple of pairs. And uh, so on any given year, GPS coordinates, I can soil sample that. Position year after year. I've got samples with manganese from ten years ago. I've got them from. From that same location for last year too. So it's comparable. You know, to the area that would be one piece of evidence that might be a comparison to. An outline area, it was, I don't think it's all the way.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I'm, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a sciency person and so, um. I don't know the answer kind of the first question in terms of penetration of some of that, but I do know that. There was a lot of thought given to whether soil samples and what types, what, what kind of questions would those answer and. And it was basically decided that soil samples would, would help the cause and that's why they were included. So. You know, I don't know, I can't say what benefit collecting samples from a pond necessarily would be, but um.
It is very concentrated.
It would show concentrations for sure. Um, and that's included, so.
Yeah, and uh, around the pond and maybe in the direction of the heaviest contaminated wells.
Yes.
Show the same pattern.
Yeah.
No, I think this lady got a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, Monopam, I'm actually Barney's next door neighbor. So pretty close to Knife River. So two questions. One, for this particular study where you're asking for the extra monitoring. Who is paying for that? Is that being charged to Knife River or you have to collect money for that?
Um, so in terms of the investigation that the state compelled Knife River is paying for that?
Okay, and then I had another question, but it somehow slipped my mind. Oh, I know where it was. So we're testing two different points and yes, you guys already called me and said that we're gonna be testing. When we did the previous spring tests and this will be the fall tester, maybe I have it backwards. Was the mine going to be, was the mine flowing and operating at the time of the prior testing?
It was. Yes.
And will that be one of the parameters you test and what kind of expected outcomes are you thinking might occur? Because it's flowing versus not flowing.
I'm really glad you asked that. Um. It's something that I have thought a lot about. The agency has thought a lot about. We, we heard. About, I don't know, ten days ago or so that. On March eleventh, the company stopped using. The facility essentially, and that means that there was no longer water going through there. And at first. Um, I'll be honest that it caused me a little bit of concern only because I had an expectation that. You know, we were, we were putting a lot of resources toward compelling this source to do this investigation because of their operations. And then now the operations had stopped and it really. I had questions about what we were actually going to learn now and whether that was gonna be compromised after we had. Really done quite a bit of work to actually make that happen. And yeah. And I really, I've changed my thinking on it and I'll, I'll tell you why. Um. The company. Met with county leaders and there had been a lot of pressure over time from the community, from, from some of you. Some of us, um, basically to stop, you know, basically saying. Can you not stop just for a while until we kind of figure this out? So they heard that. Um, and then they decided on March eleven to stop operations there. And I think the good part of this is that. When the initial investigation starts a month or two down the road, they will not be operating and we will have data for when they are not operating. There is nothing preventing the state from. Requiring more monitoring once they restart, if and when they restart operations. And I think the real benefit here is that if that were to occur. We would actually be in a position to have a much more robust understanding of the site because we would have data from when they weren't operating. We would have data from when they were operating. And we would also have domestic well data on both sides of that as well. And so. I look at it as a real win because the community has really asked for this for a long time. They stopped. And now we actually have the chance because of that stoppage to get data both times when they are both operating and not operating. And I think that's. I think that's important of understanding what's really happening here. And so, you know, I look at, I look at it definitely as a win. I know there was concern in the community that. You know, the timing of that was maybe suspicious to some people. Um, I actually think it's a really good thing. I think it's a good thing that we will have data initially about when they're not operating and there is nothing preventing the state from. You know, one month after operations, three months, six months, and then go out and collect data. And now we're in a much better position with what we understand. And they haven't been operating, which is what you've been asking for, for quite some time. Uh, that's how I look at it now. Um, I think it's a good thing.
Did they stop operating for us or did they stop operating because they're, they got their hands full with staffers and job that they bought?
Uh, you know, I'm a little bit uncomfortable speaking for them. I can tell you that, I can tell you that. They decided to stop after they met with county administration leaders and that's, you know, I, I take them at their word and regardless, you know.
All that coincidence.
Yeah, but, but I don't know that it matters. Um, I, I do think it's a good thing. I think, you know, we'll be there and if, if there's any question about. Um, not having enough answers once they begin operating, like we'll be, we'll be back asking for more monitoring and I think then we will be in a better spot. And so. You know, it took me like twenty-four hours to get my head around this and really, I, I was concerned, you know, but um. I, I think there's no question we're gonna have a more robust understanding and in the meantime, they're not operating and, you know, who knows when they'll start again, which I think that's a good thing as well and what people have been asking for. Yes.
So when you do the sampling, oh, Karen McCosky stands there. So when you guys go out to Knife River and the settling ponds are empty, which they kind of usually are this time of year, they, they get filled and they dredge them and then they dump them and they empty cell across the street from us. So are you, so I would think that would be real concentrated. That would be the area you probably will still be able to test is what's left in the bottom settling ponds? Is that gonna be one of the sites that you'll test?
Yes. Yeah, there are, I think there's nineteen wells right now that we've identified in the investigation that will be installed or if they're not there already. There are some there already in the existing network. Um, some of those wells were not in the place that we or Dogami or EPA thought they should be. And so. Basically, we're going to have a very good understanding of what's happening there because there's, there's almost twenty monitoring wells in addition to the soil sampling. Um, it is, it is a very comprehensive plan in, in terms of what it looks at and where it looks for things.
But you will test.
Yes.
Soil in the bottom of the settling pond.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good.
When you guys go, get to go onsite, whether it's you or whoever, um. I know this is primarily about water testing, but soil also, what about? The stuff that's been buried that shouldn't have been buried? Will that get dug up and checked? How will that be monitored?
That's a good question.
Well, yeah, so I can answer a little bit of it. Um, the stuff that shouldn't be buried, I don't, I don't know that I would say that. In terms of the DEQ rule. Um, what we were told was put in the pit, in the pit and we have, we have pictures from some of you. Uh, we asked for information on what was in there and basically the, what Knife River said was what the picture showed. Uh, you know, in terms of DEQ's role, that is actually clean fill material. And so. When the initial concern came to us, as a lot of them have, that we've, we've looked into, I personally looked into them. Um, there is clean fill that concrete and asphalt can be, um, that is basically considered clean full, clean fill in terms of the DEQ regulations. But that is not necessarily the same as what Dogami considers, uh, you know, in terms of their operating permit. So. At least in terms of DEQ, I wouldn't say that that material couldn't or shouldn't have been buried because it's not in conflict with any of our rules. Whether it's in conflict with the Dogami operating permit. I don't wanna speak for them, but we pass along all of the complaints to them. That is our agreement. We've always done that. Uh, we get written responses back to all the questions we ask and they said that, um, there was not a problem with that either. I. But that's, that's pretty much the extent I can speak for Dogami, but at least in terms of DEQ, there was no, there was no violation for putting asphalt, concrete and, and a variety of other things actually as, as clean bill. Yes.
Rebecca Aspel, Green Valley Road. Um. Is there a, uh, a length of time that that water flows from there onto our wells? That if they've stopped and the counts go down. Wouldn't that show that they were causing the pollution? Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know how fast the, the water transfers, but.
Um. So number one, I'm not the best person to answer that question, but. I have been in a lot of conversations and meetings where this question was discussed and I will just say that there is. There is not necessarily professional consensus on how fast that water goes. I mean, I've heard. Pretty compelling anecdotal stories about how quickly it moves and the trick, the, the. The repeated, how quickly that moves is really, has been very surprising in terms of whether it was possible to move that fast. I mean, groundwater typically moves very slow. But I don't wanna get too far out of my element in talking about the aquifer. Um, I don't think there's a lot of consensus amongst even necessarily the state agencies, like how fast that might be moving and transferring. Um. I, so I, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just for the record, Karen McCosky again. That concrete that they, and asphalt that they dumped in there, which was basically across the street from us in the Little East. So a neighbor has a record written, I think even photos, that they were actually putting into the groundwater. It had perked up. And that's when we saw they run, running the tractor, then they discharged into that stream back there without a permit. So for the record, they, I think Dogami says they can dump that. It is considered safe fill only if it's not in water.
Yeah, I, I went down, um, quite a rabbit hole trying to get to the bottom of this question because. Initially, I was a little bit surprised that it would be considered clean fill. Um. It was through DEQ and then you heard Dogami's response and then. I went yet to DSL because I heard about the water and it wasn't like this was being disposed of in solid ground. It was actually being disposed, like you said, in water. Uh, I met with Department of State Lands. Um, jurisdictionally, they tend to have jurisdiction over. Over those types of issues when there's in-water disturbances. Um, and there's basically a mining ex- exemption in state rule and that was the response from DSL, Department of State Lands. And so I sent that back as a response to the complaint that made it and that was it. So. Yeah, a, a little bit surprising, but it did not seem to be in written responses from any of the three agencies. Something that was necessarily a violation.
Or a concern, I guess, huh?
He, that was the response back, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes.
Abby Paulski.
I have a question, Ken Smith, uh, I'm definitely driving. You know, I, I think most of us in here know, uh. What, I mean, the, as far as the groundwater pollution, whatever, I mean. You know, what I said, but most of us know, uh, what caused it. My concern is now he has Stafford pit. Back on pit, so maybe not where that, this is maybe not have. Uh, more precautions so we don't, we don't experience the same episode, the new pit. I mean, should, should he not have more restrictions or more guidance to make sure it doesn't happen again?
So most of the, at Stafford as well as Woodward, is a Dogami, is a Dogami question. Um, I can tell you that in terms of the small piece of the water quality permit. The state was willing to say that there was a suspicion of contamination at Woodward. And that was pretty much as far as we could go with that. In other words, there was, it is. It was not deemed right and I think I agree with this, that we were going to stop a business that was legally operating due to it only a suspicion. And so what we did in lieu of that was. Get a plan for how we can get answers as quickly as possible. So I understand the question. Um, and I think the state's gone as far as we can go in terms of. Putting the onus on Knife River, at least for the Woodward site. And I think the same is true with Stafford. I mean. They, I don't think the state is in a position over only a suspicion right now to, um, do anything other than what we've done already with the water quality permit.
We also have an issue where they are extracting aggregate from Stafford and they're taking it across the street to Woodard. And the plant sits on a heavy industrial site, which is allowed to have a wash plant. Which is allowed to accept materials from other areas. So you are permit, that is a permitted use. So therein lies the issue. Where that wash plant sits is a heavy industrial use. Now, where the mining occurred. On Woodard was in EFU ground. That's a different situation. Where that wash plant sits is heavy industrial. So they are allowed to import material. So alls they're doing is extracting from Stafford and they're bringing it across the street. Yes, it's a dirtier material. Yes, it takes more washing. But that is allowed for the zoning. So that's, that's your. That's your caveat there. So, and I do wanna say Greg has been very, very good to you people on the way that he has taken this to heart. And how well he has fought for you and he's looked at every little fine print that he can and I commend him for this. And when we're talking about our meeting with Knife River, I was the commissioner that was present in that meeting. And I do have to say, this was the first time that I think that Knife River saw your side of the story. And realized what you guys were going through. And I do, I, I, I like that part of it. I'm not gonna say that there was, that it was an answer, but I do feel that they're now. Seeing, uh, look at your side of the story a little bit.
And I, I appreciate that, but I thought the DEQ was supposed to kinda help protect us anyway from bad actors.
And they're trying.
That's right. Oh, I agree, I agree. But how many, uh, wells do they have to pollute before you guys are willing to say yes to Snipe River?
That, so that, that is the purpose of the groundwater investigation. And so when you say how many wells, I mean, what we're going to do is we have a plan. For up to twenty monitoring wells and soil samples at that facility. And I think the point of that investigation. Is to answer the question. And so we, we are going to wait until that data comes in and then we're gonna look at the other data that we have with domestic wells. And assess it and make a determination.
There has been no expansion onto veneers. That has been, you know, put on the pole. So we are trying to get. We are trying to get the answers as best we can.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's another thing I didn't mention and I appreciate that, Commissioner. Um, yeah, the veneer expansion was. Was basically not allowed to grow from the Woodward side essentially.
So we're, we're better off than we were. But, I, I mean, okay. There's a lady behind you, Julie, that was, had her.
Okay, go ahead. Always.
I know, I'm sorry. I live on government lane. Um, so they're still mining at Stafford, so like they're not mined out. If they're not washing that at Woodwards. Where are they washing that? And are they allowed to wash on Stafford's or do they have?
There is, I, I, to my knowledge, there is no wash plant at Stafford.
I know they have a couple pits, yeah.
Yeah, they, they have a, they have a permit. They have, basically have the same general permit.
So now they're washing that at Stafford's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so Julie.
Okay, uh, Julie again, Thompson. Um, so I guess. Oh, we're, we're emotional like we've talked about before.
We don't fling.
And trying to be patient is very hard. And so when you're living this every day. And it's very expensive and it's, you know, devaluing our properties. And it's, again, I, I appreciate what you've put in, all of you, but it's years and years of this at what expense to us. I don't, it's frustrating that it doesn't happen any quicker. Um, and I think the Stafford site. What Ken was trying to say is, how do we get Dogami there to actually inspect them? They didn't do it at Knife, at Woodward. So. How, why are they gonna do it at Stafford's? Are they're gonna do the same thing?
And I, I, I'm very frustrated with Dogami. I agree with you. I totally agree with you.
I think that we probably need to look into. Who is above Dogami? Is it Secretary of State? Is it the Senator? It's the Governor. Oh, the last one.
Great.
Okay.
Well, and, and your state representatives, the state senators. And I think we talked about that at the other meeting.
We've been to the senators.
Yeah.
More, multiple times. And we always get a, we're sorry, we're gonna help you letter. And, you know, I know that they do, but again, it's years out.
They're mediators. They don't have the support.
And when you say air.
Also, I don't know if that's true because I did talk. Also, I don't know if that's true because I did talk to the Secretary of State about looking into the gummy and doing some type of an audit. And looking at what that is. And he said, I can do that, but. State senators and representatives are their bosses at some level and they can request information from them in real time. They don't have to enact an audit. They can ask. You know, different questions and different things that they.
Senator can't shut it down. He, he, he can make a, he can make a request or give his opinion, but ultimately it comes back to the state.
We do have a new Senator, Mike McLean. He's a very moral and very honest man. So hey, let's try it. You know, and Victor Reeves Iverson. We do have, you know, like I say, Mike McLean's new at the office and.
Again, we go back to the state buildings, the county, county blames the state, though, every time we contact them. The state says contact county are the one that can take care of this. But, but then I don't, they can't take.
Is a state agency and I do totally agree with you. Totally.
Yeah.
Ashley McCormick. Um, so if there's something in place, at some point, the regular testing will start on the mine site. What are you looking for specifically once the numbers reach here or here? Is there something in place when you see something X amount of times? Okay, this is finally the limit. This is what we're looking for? Or is it still just a very generalized, we're just looking for, for that still? Is there really any insight for us? Or I'm just trying to figure out like what, what are we looking?
Yeah, so specific to the groundwater investigation, I think it's less about numbers, but more about what. The overall data says about the fate and transport across that property and where that, where that water is going. So that's, that's really what that investigation is. It's. Up gradient, down gradient. Fifteen or so wells in the middle of the property and kind of getting a better idea of the flow of that water. And what are the levels at various monitoring sites to say this? So to make a, to make a more. By finger pointing at, here's where the water is going and this is kind of why we believe that. This is what the data shows that it's going here and it's impacting these wells. And I think that that investigation is going to be capable of doing that. So it's not so much the numbers themselves, but more of what. All of the monitoring data says about what is happening with contaminants flowing through groundwater in the lower and the upper aquifer. Across that property and the impacts downstream. So that is what are down gradient. So that's. That's what we're looking for. And, and I guess the question, the answer to how do we do that is hydrogeologists will look at this data and examine it and say, is there. Kind of a clear picture here that can pinpoint a source for this. And the data is. Designed, the plan is designed to add, answer that question.
And is the hydrogeologist going to look at it with each of these testings or once a year?
So there's, there's monthly and quarterly both. Um, it, it kind of varies depending on the, on the site, but. We will start getting data one month after. Um, and also there has been a lot of data collection on Knife River site for, for years. There's been there. So. We have that, yeah. Okay, so there's data, there's data there. And so we'll pull that in. We'll pull the domestic well data in and then as the new stuff comes in, which is new in the work plan for the investigation. Um, hy- hydrogeologists of very different agencies are going to look at that and say, what is, what does this tell us? And does it pinpoint a source like it's supposed to? And, and how do we know it's coming from this source? And those are the kind of questions they'll ask and how they exactly do that, I don't know. But they'll look at the data and. Determine if they can decide who's, who's actually responsible.
And, and most importantly, from what he said earlier, it's not just DEQ, it's not just Knife River. It's EPA, it's Norton, it's all these different people.
Water resources and junior, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so, so it's not just one. Source anymore. It's multiple sources. So if they are playing with the numbers, it'll become prevalent. I, I, again, I have a science.
That's what they do. I mean, it's, it's part of what the hydrogeologists do is, is kind of make those determinations. Look at all the data we have and kind of assess if they can, you know, make. Make a connection between a source and downstream, down gradient impacts. Yeah.
But, but you, you mentioned the veneer expansion, the postponement on that. Is, is that indefinite or is that just until we figure this out?
It's, it's both. It's indefinite, but it's also basically, we said that we, we wanted to see. Um, the results of the investigation before we were, we were comfortable permitting an expansion of the site that we were suspicious of. So I don't, I don't see that progressing anytime soon, certainly before or able to look at. You know, numerous months and quarters of data coming in from the investigation to be able to make that. So that is not something I see happening anytime soon.
So somebody purchased that piece of property. Would they be able to carry on that? Would that be a new application for? A mining permit on that piece of property? You know, or would they be able to grandfather sand these permanent?
So I, I think is, is the basically is the question if there is a kind of a sale of that property.
Basically Sandy's pretty old. So if he drops dead. Before they start mining that piece of property and the new owners, then are they going to, are, are they going to be able to pick up all his permit? Or is the new ownership of that property, say Knife River bought it or, I mean, whoever, are they gonna be, is that a new application process for them to start mining again?
Yeah, so. I mean, basically. DEQ and Dogami have said that we're not comfortable with an expansion of, of Woodward onto veneer because of the suspicions and questions that we have. So. You know, regardless of who owns it, those, those suspicions are still going to be there. So, yeah, it, I don't want to get too much in the degree of what happens when a, you know, property. Transfer permits and all that kind of stuff. But generally, um, the, the concern would still be there.
That might have been more of a county question.
Yeah, I think that's a better question.
Land use. I don't know what happens on that. What does that sound, John?
So the, the, the permit is through Knife River, their lease of the veneer property. So the, the lease would maintain, um, it would. Survive the sale of the property on the veneer passed away or something. So we do, nothing would change basically on this end.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Unless the lease, unless the lease was written that way, I guess.
Yes.
So, well, I'm really, um, I live on Puckett and it burns. I have a question on that. So the draft plan, the work plan that we have available, can the public, A, knew that? And then my other question is a lot of this is the actual analysis of the data. And much of that needs to be done by hydrologists because they're the people that understand the, the water flow. So since Knife River is paying for this. Are they also paying to make sure that we have a qualified or a couple of hydrogeologists available to participate in the data analysis?
So to answer the second question first, it's, it's the state agencies. It's primarily Dogami and DEQ will be evaluating the data and making determinations on what it says and doesn't say. So. That's, that's kind of who is making that determination. And I, I'm sorry, what was the first question?
Will the information be made out there?
Oh, thank you.
Ken, sorry, Ken.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, the governor, um, specific to this issue has really stressed transparency. And so that, that will be available. The work plan will be available. Um, you know, Jim has been invited to participate in these, in these as well. And so we've, we've really leaned into that. And so the work plan. Um, the comprehensive sampling and analysis plans, if you want to look at that, you could, that's going to be made available too. Um, we have. We've gotten to the point where we've realized we need probably a website to start storing information. We've got to the point where. Um, there's going to be a health letter consultation. We have all the domestic well data. Uh, there's this various sampling plans, which you're more than happy to review to your heart's content. And all of that should be in one place. And so, yes, it will be available.
And, and who would we contact if we want to see that? How would we find out where to what?
Um, you can, you can follow up with me. I, I am trying to make it more public and so you, you won't, you, you know, people won't have to come individually to me. I, I want to put it on the website. Um, we, we've crashed and burned there. Um, and so it might be delayed, but I, I can get you. Uh, I can get you the work plan. Is that previous website still, still active? Um, it is, but it's, it's mostly on Oregon Health Authority right now. We, you know, we were talking about whether we want to just keep that site and put our documents there, but I don't know if that's appropriate either, but we'll, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Adam McCulkey on Stahansik, right across the street. You talked about them drilling more monitoring wells. Is the, does the plan include? The areas that actually, you know, we talked about where they dump stuff in the water and all that stuff. Are some of those wells going to be located in there, the monitoring wells to actually go through whatever that setup was? Go down in the water and see what's there. And then also. Where they've been taking the, the fines and everything out of the settling ponds in the past, they've been dumping on, on the open cell or. Right there. Is it, some of those going to be located there also?
They're everywhere. Yeah, there's a lot of monitoring wells. And I think where we're at right now, like it was twenty and then there was, there was still some concerns about maybe adding a couple more. There were some back and forth on. So there, it is, it is comprehensive. I, I can get you a map and that would probably be better just for you to know it. Cause you probably know the specifics of the site better than I do. Um, but there's wells. Um, it is well covered with that.
And then talking about the flow of the water.
Before, before you want, would, would, would there be an opportunity if the neighbors out there thought, they were, they see the map and they go. I see, I've seen them dump stuff here all the time. Is that something that you could add a well?
Maybe. Um, we've, we've really relied so far with Jim providing that, that information. Um, and we're really close to finalizing it. But there have been a lot of eyes on, a lot of eyes on this. And for people who know what they're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not, I'm not really worried about that. I am happy to share it. Um, but really the, the transparency and the involvement has been through their professional locally. And so he has provided comments and. I don't, I don't know that I could commit to like distributing it and then, you know, taking it back. We're, we're really close to finalizing. It's been through really exhaustive review.
Yeah, we don't want to delay us.
So you talked about the wa- how the.
And, and, sorry, and, and it, it can be changed. I mean, that, that plan can be amended as we see fit. Like it's somewhat nimble and that it's not like we have the plan and that's it and it doesn't change. Um, we, the state has pretty broad authority in investigation to, to hit it.
So you talked, I'm sorry. Um, you talked about how the geologists have to figure out how the water flows and how it goes through there and stuff. Are you planning? And, and. One would think that if you want to go look, and I'll use river as, as it's an underground river to open it. How far upriver are you going to go to monitor? And that's other people's property. Uh, to actually say, hey, the water's coming from there. It's good here. It enters here and goes out here and then it changes. So are you planning on monitoring any wells? You know, from the source?
Yes, there was a lot of conversation about Knife River's ability legally to kind of go off their footprints and their comfort and really the state authority for that. But where we landed is there is going to be off property monitoring. Um. There's permissions in the final draft that I saw fairly recently where. Um, those locations have been identified and we're going to be approaching landowners for exactly that type of information and the permission to do that. So that is both upgrading and downgrade. And I think of where we're generally talking about, um, absolutely, that's been, you know, incorporated into the plan. The, there are still um, for landowner access issues that we're. That we're working through, but yes.
And you know, Greg, when veneer, I was on the planning commission for veneer, when veneer sent in their app, or Knife Rivers and then veneer. All that hydrology report was on there. On that application. So there's a lot of information in that actual application that was submitted by Knife Rivers that she could access.
There is. You know, it's funny though, when we went through the planning commission and all that, when they first went in for Woodward's site, they had a different geologist, hydrogeologist on, on staff. And then we've discussed water flow. We were concerned being across the street that, you know, would affect our water. So he actually said the water actually for where we're at flows from the river north. And then when we go to veneer, the hydrologist, and I asked that question, I said, you're saying it flows from north, you know, kind of toward the west and, and, and whatever. So I go, which one's right? So anyway, so you got two different conflicting reports from their geologists. Hopefully somebody figures that one out.
Yeah, so. That's really why I ask, what kind of hydrologist is, is the state gonna have? Because you have to be trained in the study in order to give a good analysis. And I know there's been staff cutting. So I just wanted to make sure that in that plan or the draft or project or whatever, they have the right skilled people to do the analysis. And that they're not people owned by Knife River.
Heard of.
Go ahead. I'm just going to go out on a limb with this one. And if for some reason they don't follow the rules that are put in place, um. What are the repercussions? What is going to happen if they don't allow Jim Newton to come do his own testing? What if they don't turn and they're stuck to you? Is there a plan in place for? If they continue what they're doing?
So. Yeah, I, I understand the lack of trust. Um, what I can tell you is that Knife River, working with both Dogami and DEQ has been very. Um, they've been very responsive to kind of all of these considerations in the work plan. And. I, I don't want to get too far in speculating because I really don't anticipate. That being an issue. We have worked out, you know, pretty specifically even access, like Jim Newton will be allowed. And we wrote these things in there, EPA and or DEQ laboratory being there. Um, there has not been pushback on those types of issues. We've got some pushback on other ones, but not really that. And so I'm not concerned with. Them not following the work plan because we have the regulatory authority to require the work plan. And we have the required, we have the regulatory authority to enforce it. They don't comply with the work plan. So.
They're not complying. I mean, is there anything in place for if they do not turn it?
How do you enforce it? How do you enforce the plan if they, if you're just going off of trust and they say?
It, it's, it's not, it's not going off trust. We, we have, we have agreements on what's going to happen out there. And if they don't. Uh, we have, we have a penalty and enforcement program. I do not expect that to happen here.
I'm just, I think what Ashley is saying is.
An enforcement program entailed.
Yeah, because they didn't, they didn't follow their CUP. They didn't follow their Dogami permit. So why are they going to follow this? That's what we're wondering.
And how would that look? Think about a business. They're saying they're innocent and then they don't follow that.
Well, they, how did the. I don't, they don't care. They don't care.
They had judges shut down the news sites and other things. So how they look right now is currently they're in a massive PR war online. There's. Just like sometimes you find news articles from what they've been doing in the past ten years. Sometimes you can't, middle of destruction goes Canada all the way through continent. So currently it's kind of hard to find stuff. So you know damn well, you're mad at them. You know.
So what is the, what is the?
Yeah, I, I just.
That was a very good question and good answer. So.
You know, I don't, I don't, I have an answer. I'd like to reward specific things.
What are, I guess, are, what are you?
Yeah, what can?
Yeah, okay, so. The, the consequence of not following a work plan is the same for not complying with a permit. So what happens is we. We find violations. We either have this submitted by residents, which happened on this property. Uh, back in twenty twenty-two, we do an investigation ourselves on a, on a site visit, which we do. Um, there's various ways that we can learn if something happening, or we just go out to the facility and inspection, see violations, report them. What happens then is we document what we think are violations. We send that to the Department of Justice and attorneys. We send a copy of that, what's called reinforcement notice or a pen that goes to the company or the individual saying, here's what we think. You violated. These are the statutes. Uh, you have an opportunity to respond to these complaints. They can either respond or not. If they don't. We issue a civil penalty. We have a formula in statute that talks about exactly what the penalties are. It is based on. Um, things like how many previous penalties have been on the site, uh, what were the nature of those penalties? What was the environmental damage? What was the, even the mindset of the company in terms of should they have known this was a violation? Did they do this willfully? Did they know this was a violation? It spits out a number and it's very much defined in statute what that penalty process are. Um, but if we're talking about not complying with the work plan, it would be basically like not complying with a permit and the. The, the Department of Justice does not take lightly knowingly violating rules. They're much more lenient when these things happen. Um, but when, you know, you haven't agreed upon a work plan. Any kind of violations to that are going to be referred for enforcement. So.
What's the enforcement though? Isn't it of monetary?
It's, it's, no, please, yes.
So is there any?
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to.
Were there, were there ever come to a position where they would no longer have their permit because they're not following the rules? So the thing is, what, what people were there.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that, we have the authority. It is, it's just really rare and it doesn't, it doesn't really happen that way. Um.
What if, what if they said, so the day came, you've got the plan, you can't come on the property? Right? Don't get out of here.
Yes, they don't let Jim on.
Just say Jim's not.
Just say Jim's not allowed on our property. Yeah, I think that's what they're they're asking is, you know, we we're working, I'm not saying it's gonna happen. I'm not saying it's not gonna happen. They they work with you through the whole process and then one day they just go, eh, we changed our mind. Nobody's seven foot on our property.
Because they've added no trespassing signs all up and down that road now as well.
It's tough one.
And it's like a little fence now.
Oh, that's a different company.
But you know, Knife River is a large corporation and they've got more damn attorneys working for them than probably the state of Oregon. You know, so this reminds me a lot of medical practice lawsuits. They are going to throw their lawyers at this and waste our time and. Uh and they know we only have some money, you know, so I tell you, I mean, we. But county commissioners need to be more responsible too and not allow these people to come into our county. And harvest all the rock and what have you and then haul it off to this state here because the great county goes elsewhere, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They might have, but you guys need to do more work.
We're changing the subject here and I think we have a specific question for Greg and I'm happy to hear your questions and.
Oh, where's my question?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go then.
So back to the original, we we do commissioner have uh the stop work authority. It is. It is extremely rare to use that to have it go there and I just don't anticipate that happening here by any way can I imagine that happening. We. We have been, you know, agreeing on these terms for quite some time with so many agencies and Knife River that. I understand the mistrust, but with the enforcement looming and with, you know, potential stop work orders, I I just. That that those are the tools we have.
So that is a potential outcome. If we were to just say, you're not allowed on this property, you're not coming on here. That a potential outcome would be we're shutting everything down, no more of this.
It is, yeah.
Okay, I think that that was the question, right?
I have a question, but a little bit different subject, I guess. So the holding ponds onsite, do you know how much water they hold when they're full?
I don't, but we do.
Okay, I'm just curious because if if they truly just dried up, evaporated, soaked into the ground and were not pumped out somewhere else. In a three week time period, that seems like a lot of dirty water. Soaking into the ground in a short period of time and if that's been going on for ten years now. I think that that's a big concern. And that that should maybe be looked into.
Yeah, I mean, the ponds online and and the pond drains.
Right.
Yeah.
Ken, did you, did you wanna follow up?
No.
Do you have any other points you wanna bring up?
Uh do I? Yeah. I just, I felt like. I just, you know, let me get that specific. I appreciate him coming. Uh next, I don't live out there in Ankaras Valley, uh out there in Eric, but I'm next. To the other pit that they're at. And you know, I'm I'm not too sure we shouldn't be testing like Brook Brookfield acres. You know, I mean, right now they're clean, but who's to say that, you know, in six months from now, they're 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 gonna be just like these other folks, you know, but. I mean, how many tests does Knife River have? I mean, they're all over the northwest here, you know, so and you could bet the better line item on on their budget, you know, attorney fees. And they they got more money than than we do, you know?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you you're you're countering a company that's bad. Our company was got environmental aw- awards. For how well we reclaim, how well we mine, and we were awarded California stock top award. So I'm sorry that you have an example of how bad it can be because mining can be very good for the community that it's in. And I I'm just sorry because we're sitting here as a result of mining and I'm very sorry there are the bad egg.
Sure, I appreciate that.
And that and.
You got Knife River pit too, you talking about?
I'm I'm not talking about Knife River. I'm talking about my husband, we were in heavy, we did mine, my my husband, we had. Mining and asphalt and concrete and we got environmental awards for.
Oh, good for you. You never shared that with me.
And what I'm saying is I'm sorry that we have a bad egg in this community because mining can be done right and it can be a good number. And uh when I was on the planning commission, I voted no with a veneer expansion because it I didn't feel it was right for the community. But again, I'm sorry for this bad egg and you guys all know that. But again, I'm I'm sorry that we have this. I cannot believe they would be that egregious that they would not let, they would do that and not let them on that. I can't believe that.
I I believe they would do that.
I can't believe that. I would be really shocked.
One of my, I it's not really a question as much as it is, um I guess maybe to help protect future mining sites also and residents around them in the CUP. If I'm not mistaken, there were supposed to be wells that were tested each direction.
Yes.
Of the mine site before, during, after, whatever, of of the water that or before. So that they had a baseline to go off of.
That was when they were, they were draining it into the drain.
Yeah.
They were pumping it out. So when they had to dewater, it was part of that dewatering permit in the CUP saying, when if you do dewater and you get a permit, which they did.
Right.
Then you, we were gonna go outside this area right here and then talk to the property owners and see if they would allow us to test their well so we can get a baseline. They sort of missed their baseline. They they it could have either been positive for them or it could have been positive for for the the residents there, but they just didn't follow it because.
So.
We had to report them on the dewatering because they weren't gonna report.
They're reporting, it's set, it's set.
The, I guess the problem is, is that once they have these permits, they're not enforced in any way really shaped or formed. They're not enforced, so. To think that the Stafford site is going to be any different, I I think is wrong. Um and I think that it would be a great idea for the people that live on Brookfield to have wells tested. Now before they go any further and to monitor it at least because they're gonna end up like us. Or could end up like us and there's no baselines because nobody followed any of the permits.
So that at least for the DQ state, for their water quality, they they are enforced. They're enforced and we're using that exact language for conducting groundwater investigation. There's no known violations that we've seen. Uh with that site, so.
Except for the dewatering.
Which for which we issued a penalty.
That you've seen though. I'm just trying to say that you've seen, like, it's not, I mean, let's be honest, if they did it once. And they got their, they got caught and only because they got caught did they get. You know, a fine. They would keep doing it. It's not like they're gonna go, oh gosh, we dewatered, we won't ever do it again. Not. Eh, it doesn't happen.
Yes.
I'm, I would um like to say the first time we met was a year, a year ago-ish. And I thankfully, I'm not dealing with what they are other than my kids and my grandkids are. Um but they have been dealing with this for years on end and the first time I've ever seen someone. Just take this to heart like you have and said, this is really wrong. I'm going to fight to make this better. Um and and the fellow from, I think it was Owen Ford and another thirty was there too. Um I I haven't, I haven't made it to all the meetings, but I am just, I have seen so much happen since the first time I met you to today. And what's being implemented for, you know, testing. I know we all wish we would have seen you years ago, but I I am truly surprised at how quickly things are moving now that you're involved um. And I I know it's nothing's gonna be fast enough. It's just, I mean, my daughter wants to move. She gets on her house, you know, and they're stuck with this. But but I'm I'm so thankful for how much, what you've done to get involved. And what all you've done to just kind of make this your mission to help these guys because it is, it is, it is just really, you're so thankful.
I I I appreciate hearing that. I mean, we and I speak for the dozen or so folks at DEQ uh who are involved in this and there are that many in different aspects of it like. We we want this answer today. And I I am confident that with the groundwater investigation especially. That we we have concrete steps in the very near future to get the answers that we've waited a year and have to get. So. Yeah, we've we've, we we don't move as fast as people want, but there are, there are some things that we've done and and I think the biggest one is starting very soon with testing on that property. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
We do appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes.
Karen McCloskey. I could be wrong, but I think when I looked at the dogami reclamation plan that Knife River submitted and dogami approved, yes. When they're in the reclamation part, that water from the settling ponds will be dispersed. So pumped and drained and dispersed out onto the surface. Is that common practice?
I don't know.
And I'm wondering, so if we find that it's, this is the source, I'm wondering if they're gonna be able to continue with that reclamation plan. Or if that needs to be updated, wouldn't you think it would need to be updated or they couldn't do that?
I would have thought if they return the topsoil, which is a normal reclamation, basically what you do, you take the topsoil and you put it to the side.
Yeah.
And remove the sanding gravel because that's what you're mining. Then you replace the topsoil and depending on how thick the sanding gravel is, usually it's ten fifteen feet. And your your level goes down that and I would think what they would do is irrigate from that settling pond onto that. But again, I don't know what the pH because Dick, I remember at the planning. Uh the Dick stood up and said that your pH and that and your soil amendments didn't work out. Now, when we did that. We never had any problem. In fact, the ground became warm. It was, it was great. They went right in and had productive agriculture planned. But am I wrong, Dick, in that you did not have that productive on that one? Well, when we went out the planning commission, they had pigweed. Which was not a very good thing to show, I didn't think, but you said you couldn't farm it because you didn't have right pH or I can't remember exactly what you said, but the soil amendment wasn't right.
We we had that whole area including with veneer and the Woodnird site, we had it plotted and and sampled every acre. And so we have soil mass that showed a lack of fertility. A good friend that you can put back to the seventies in the Homestead area and I sent him the results of. Those samplings and he said, where did you get this? This reminds me of of this low sand at Homestead. So there were no nutrient values and and the the pH was off. I I don't have those with me, but. But the amendments, it it would have taken thousands of dollars.
To get it back, but was it the topsoil? Was it the topsoil that had originally been on that?
No, that's never been.
They have put it that way.
No, that's on burn right across from McCloskey's house.
Is the word topsoil.
Yeah.
So that is what the re- that is what a real reclamation should be, Karen. That original topsoil should be put back. It should be put into. Production agriculture and I would assume that would be, you would irrigate that on there, but. Again, that isn't the game they're playing because I remember that right there.
Yeah, they found that the water and it gets tested and they found that the 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 soil in the settling ponds is really high in manganese or arsenic or whatever. And you, and they start mining and they feel that they wouldn't wanna reclaim it and put it back, right?
But that is the way generally when you do that, that works. It's how that works.
Okay, thank you.
All the berms are not all the topsoil. I think they put back, they, I watched them from the office for a for a year. And they did push it over, but then they also brought it back in the northern part of that thirty acres in there. The stuff in the front is the burn, is the topsoil, but so. You can see the the farmland in the back that they put the topsoil. It's not, it's growing weeds.
Well, it had big wood on it, this tall, as I saw.
Right, right. And they have not planted it in the last two years and they were supposed to have planted.
What Dick said is not true.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're off the subject. We're we're drifting. So does anybody have any question about water, not fertility of soil?
Can I make a statement?
Sure.
So you know, I think we all kind of take it in a short series with some of the decisions that have been made in the past. May thirteenth, city council meeting is going to address some of these very same issues. With the biomass machine or biomass facility and that's a whole lot worse than some of the stuff that uh. Knife River is is causing this. So if you folks can come on the thirteenth, uh except at the uh uh Great School, six o'clock. I mean, at least more people there, the better because we need to have more people involved and not allow all of our government elected officials make our decisions for us. They're doing a great job. I mean, if you can come on the thirteenth, more people to show up, less of this kind of stuff, we will have to. And.
Okay.
Cause if they pass it, we're coming to you.
Does anybody have any more questions for Greg at all? No more question? Okay, one more question.
Um, Lady Anti-Cobalmaker some country, so um. I just did a lot of talk about like a final decision. We know the wells are contaminated. Uh we know basically where they are. And we pretty much know why. When a decision is made, who makes that decision? Who is, um you know, who who's going to make the decision of who is guilty of contaminated water?
It's a really good question. Um so. What's interesting is that we we kind of are straddling two different kind of programs within DEQ and I think it's important in this case because we have, on one hand, we have groundwater protection. But we also have the water quality permitting, which is more of the the regulation and the enforcement side and the permit itself. And and right now, um and from the beginning, we we haven't known because we we aren't sure what kind of problem we're doing with where those two different avenues go. And they both go in very different directions. If this turns out to be a point source problem. Meaning we can, we can definitively show that coming from one facility, that is very clearly in kind of the water quality permitting and enforcement realm. If it comes back where it's not and it's more of a widespread thing naturally occurring, whatever. It's a groundwater protection thing which can in some cases become like a longer term um project to kind of address. So it really depends in terms of who ma- who makes the decision. Right now, both programs are. Very engaged in looking at this data and developing the plans and they'll both be involved along with Dogami EPA. About kind of assessing that data and making that determination and then when and if that happens. There's gonna be a crossroads in terms of like the state response to that because they're very different paths and what that looks like. So. Hydrogeologists will basically make a technical determination, but they say there's gonna have to be consensus between multiple agencies, multiple professionals in that discipline. Does that answer that question?
Kind of.
Okay. I'll take it kind of.
Okay, so um when that determination is made. Um what's going to happen with these landowners that have, um I mean. It taken it short as Kim said, um is big time and they, you know, uh their land values are um worth nothing. Um pretty much, I mean, some of them um that um, you know, can't drink the water, can't bathe and it can, you know, use their toilets, a lot of different things. So how? How are they going to be reimbursed? Are they going to have to do um as a group a class action suit against Knife River or the county or? Um the state, I mean, you keep bouncing around as to who's actually guilty.
Yeah, I can't imagine DEQ or any related state agencies being able to answer that question. I mean, that what happens civilly. Based on the results is not something that the agency is necessarily gonna be involved in. What we will be involved in is determining whether that's a source or or not point source by problem. Um and then dealing with it in those respective programs. One would be the enforcement side, one would be a groundwater, kind of a longer term management of the of the watershed. But the in terms of like what happens with like all the costs and stuff, like I don't see that being a a DEQ question and I I just I never thought about that. Like, it's not something that we would have purview over anyway. Our job there would be to make sure that we've assessed the problem where we can not only have a theory but can prove where the water is coming from. And then it goes into one of those two paths that I mentioned. It's either a longer term groundwater protection or it goes into enforcement. Uh and I don't think either of those is going to address kind of your question and concern about, you know, reimbursement type issues or more of the civil side. It just wouldn't be connected.
Uh the only thing I would say is until you have a definitive answer. Then there's not, I mean, you can just say, this is how I feel, this is what I believe. But and that's what why the county has been pushing so hard for this is to get a definitive answer for the community to be able to say. This is the answer. And then from there on, that's that's for the community, the citizens of the community then to take that information and move on. But without that, we're all in just limbo, pointing fingers and saying, well, this is what we believe, this is what we think, but that doesn't do anybody. If that.
While we're in limbo, just another question, kind of off subject, um I just wanted to be kind of on the record, but uh.
While we're in limbo, just another question off, kind of off subject, um, I just wanted to be kind of on the record, but, um, um, the, um, the plan that is planned for, I mean, this Stafford property up there, out through Montana, um, wouldn't it be better knowing that we have this issue right now in, um, Northwest Prideville to back off and see what this problem is? And where, you know, we, we feel like we know where it came from. But wouldn't it be better to make sure that, uh, the, um, uh, we, we err on the safety side before we approve, um, before you guys approve, um, another potential issue for Kirk County, um, and, you know, cause landowners more issues. I know it's a GDQ question, but, um, uh, you know, it seems like we should kind of study that a little more before we go to May thirteenth and potentially um, have a vote that approves, um, valuable farm ground, um, going into, um, Evian Dunlop.
So that would be a city decision on May thirteenth? And I've made it clear in past public meetings that my wife and I own property in that general area, so I'm staying out of it. So I'll let Suzie.
So again, Seth is right. May thirteenth is the city. They have not come to the county and that would be something that we will have to take into consideration and decide at that time when they come to the county. But what that process will be is they will first go to the planning commission, our county planning commissions. And they will do an evaluation and then at that time, what, what our county planning commission decides, then it will come to the commissioners. So Seth will be out, it will be between Ryan and I. And then, um, yeah. If, you're right, it'll be taken into consideration. Is that the, that part?
I, I just want to say, it won't even come to the county if it, if it doesn't go through the city. So. And so those comments.
Question. So with, there's only two commissioners voting.
Yeah.
What if it's a tie? How do you break that?
Well, if it's a tie, it's just a tie then.
Well, we're gonna be there.
I, um.
How do you break a tie though?
Well, what we, so, so one of the questions, and Ken is sitting here, he questioned Brian.
He's gonna get, would you go back to the other stuff? I really don't.
Yes. And we really shouldn't be discussing this, but then it could.
We'll go back to the other stuff. I'm happy to weigh in.
It could go on to Circuit Court.
Okay.
In short, that's a good question.
Gotcha.
But again, this isn't the subject of tonight.
Right.
But you were right, it should be taken into consideration and we will leave it at that. So then, is there any other questions on the subject that we are here tonight and that is water contamination and breaks? Okay, Ashley, I can't see you, but I know I see a hand.
So my question is, once a determination is made, you know, it is them, it isn't them, whatever. Homeowner is going to be made aware because it's one thing, this group, that you keep coming, we're very involved. There's still people on my road from leaving the water because they believe if there's really an issue, our local officials would be reaching out to them about it. So it doesn't matter where it's coming from. Will there, who puts the word out so that people know, okay, yes, we have decided there is an issue out here, this water is unsafe to consume? Who does that? Because there's also, I mean, there are properties being bought and sold around there and not everyone is disclosing this or they're choosing to turn a blind eye. People are purchasing homes and they're getting into trouble. Is there going to be an official something in some way, shape or form so that people are aware? I mean, it's, it's one thing that we talk, but once an official thing is decided, is there going to be something going out to every homeowner within that area stating whatever you want?
Yeah, um, I don't know. I, I haven't thought that far ahead in terms of like what happens when that comes back. Um, but you know, in the short term, it's really county health and OHA that we've been working with on, on just, you know, getting basic information to people so they can make choices that they want to make. And we've kind of hammered, you know, local health, they've been here. Maybe they could do more, uh, with OHA to kind of on, on the health side, like, you, you know, here's some information for you, that type of thing. Um, I don't know what OHA and local health done, uh, has done so far has been maybe quite good enough. But that's what we've relied on to kind of get that message out.
That would come into Kirk County Public Health purview and it would also be in coordination with Oregon Health Authority. And it would be treated just like we had a contagious disease or anything. It would be, it would be gotten at that time. And it would be under coordination of both of those sequences.
Like as in a letter or something, not something online?
If it was a health issue, it would be much more serious. It would, could even go house to house. It would be gotten out there because I'd like to say the newspaper, we have a newspaper guy in the back, but not everyone reads a newspaper. Social media, it would be broadcast out, but we would make sure that everyone was aware, particularly in the case of a health issue.
Yeah, and the, the health consultation is a, is a fairly public process as well. I mean, there's like interviews, it's, it's fairly extensive in terms of what they, uh, what they report back in this. Um, and so there's a lot of community notification and outreach, you know, built into the, in the process at OHA for the letter of health consultation. And that'll start as soon as this next data is collected. So they should, they should be starting that letter like within six weeks, two, two months.
Does that only involve the folks that are already involved in that? Like David called me that night.
Yes.
I want to make sure you're not drinking your water.
Yeah.
For me, who is not involved in this?
It's a good question. So initially, um, the data for the health consultation is only based on those sixty-one homes that we have data on. But the breadth of the problem and scope in terms of health impact will be much larger and would be the responsibility of OHA and Kirk County Public Health, local public health to, um, determine.
We would certainly take it seriously.
Yeah. Does, does a county have a environmental person or whatever, or, you know, somebody there? Because when I talked to David or he talked, I asked him some questions, geology or something like that, and he said, you're, you're a county person, whoever that is. Yeah, why don't, so.
I'm gonna throw that down to these two guys at the end. John Isler and Will Dandak.
So we do, we have an environmental health, um, person who, uh, his name is Max Mambler. And he, my understanding is he would be able to answer some questions on wells, concerns about, uh, like well safety. So he's walking in providing contact information.
Well, that's why I was kind of curious. We did have somebody because I've never seen him or even heard about him until David mentioned something and then I had to go, you know, is, do we have one or not? So.
My understanding is I don't think it's, um, just an expertise or job description that extends to private ones. Okay. It's a community water system that you need to school more of.
Is, given just what's going on right now, enough reason to reach out to people and even just advise them to test their wells? Because again, there's people that, well, until someone official reaches out to me, I'm not going to do that. Is there anything that the county can do to help? With, I mean, there's only sixty-one wells being tested, but I think there'd be a lot more who would be more willing. Especially if they believed that our local officials really encourage, there is a big potential that your water is unhealthy.
I think that's a good point, Ashley. And what I can do is talk to OHA about kind of expanding their messaging that they've already part, I mean, they've already done it. It's already there. You've, you've all got it. And they also have more than that. So I think maybe the question goes to them is, is whether the scope of that geographic area should probably be expanded with, with direct communication. But I can ask them that.
And I mean, even on a road, I mean, so I mean, this, we have your cell phone and we talk to you directly, but there are people that are not in a specific group that, I mean, until they receive something from one of you, they're not even open to the idea.
That would make our job a lot easier because right now I think we have to, um, basically bring the bad news to people that your water probably is not, and we have to dispose that.
Yeah.
And so we need to have it tested and we need to spend five hundred bucks to have it tested. Yeah, so that would make our job a lot easier.
Have you reached out to more than just the people in this room, OHA?
I, I don't believe so.
I know that OHA is in contact with Katie Plum, our director, uh, because I know she's talked to them about any, uh, water. Like putting in a water, I don't know the right term, system or whatever. So I know that they've been in contact with her. And so I can double check on that. And I can put, and Katie has contacts there and I can make sure that we I'll do that, I'll contact her and make sure. But OHA should be the top that is, is filtering down, especially in the health risks.
Is most of the toxicity primarily involving arsenic and manganese?
Yes. Even with your nitrates, you know, if you're pregnant, like there's, there's a certain amount of nitrates that can cause damage also, particularly in a pregnant, well, yeah, particularly in pregnancies.
Yeah, there, there were eleven wells commissioned that tested over the MCL for, uh, for nitrogen.
And then you did have some that tested for E. coli, which isn't gonna kill you, but you know, you don't really want those fecal contamination in your water, which is not something that I would find, I wasn't, but because if you're used to it, you're okay, but never.
Well, and not, not to take away from those, but there's nitrate issues across all. Across all of rural areas. So I, I'm not, I'm not lessening anybody's situation.
No.
But that's, that's something we deal with in, in rural America all, all the time. And so, but, but I, I think that's a great idea to, to share more information and get that information out. I, I assume.
I just want to protect more people.
I assume that that was already happening through OHA, but I'm, I'm happy to.
Yeah, I don't think it was beyond the sixty-one that participated.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, me too.
And maybe we need to just draw a big circle, just include those homes in that big circle. Ask OHA what they think and draw a big circle and start.
And our health department can kind of boot, boots on the ground, showing them what the map looks like and sharing information and helping get more information.
That is something we should address because the manganese is affecting the brain and you end up with, I've worked with patients like that, that you end up with a Parkinson's brain burn.
Yes.
You know, hypothermia, ethnicity with the muscle. And it takes several years to, to develop. And once it gets, you know, lodged in the brain, it's there. So we should, you know.
We're just giving them stories. Other people have done, probably have magnesium in their well waters are actually caused by medical conditions. And you don't really know about it till thirty years later.
No.
But we could give them the, the study, like, so actually online that said, you know, what's my challenge?
Yeah.
I, I literally just pulled that up to her and they found that it had caused the local heart, heart defects in babies. And you were, what you were talking about, organ processor really in the brain, you know, both of those chemicals.
Oh, okay. So you're, you're a good friend.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we want input and enjoy having you guys come to our meetings and hear what you have to say because we're open for any ideas of how we can get information out and how we can get to a point where we have an actual answer.
And we always have an open door with a little brown house behind the sandwich factory. So come have a sandwich at the sandwich factory and then come say hi to us.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions about water contamination that you'd like to ask? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. And you're gonna second?
Second.
And no discussion and we will adjourn.
Good.
Thank you.